Good evening and thank you all for joining. My name is Luke Anzlot and I am honored to be tonight's Town Hall Moderator. As a former candidate and a current member of the Waukesha County Democratic Central Committee and the current Chair of the Electoral Committee at the LSBC, I believe the public should have the opportunities to stay up to date with our elected officials. Tonight, you will have the opportunity, so feel free to ask any questions. This event is co-hosted in partnership between the Lower South Progressive Caucus, or LSBC for short, and the Waukesha County Democratic Central Committee. The LSBC is a political and activist organization on the eastern shore that is unaffiliated with any political party and is committed to empowering working people by building a progressive movement on the lower eastern shore. Whereas the purpose of the Waukesha Democratic Central Committee is to build the Democratic Party's organizational capabilities in the county, promote democratic principles, and elect democratic candidates. Tonight's guest is Mir Boda. Mir Boda comes from a family with deep roots on the eastern shore. His father and grandfather were watermen until they tragically died in a boating accident during the winter storm of 1979. Along with Mir's uncle and two cousins, this experience instilled in Mir a strong love and respect for the Chesapeake Bay and the people of the eastern shore. After his mother remarried, Mir lived in various places including West Virginia, Garrett County, Maryland, and Weansville, North Carolina. In 1991, he and his family returned to the eastern shore and settled in Sarptown. Mir eventually worked for Walmart and lived in Northern Virginia, where he met his wife Brigitte, who was from Peru, in 2015. In 2015, Mir won a seat on the City Council representing District 2 with 58% of the vote. He is known for his tenacity and his never quit attitude, with the support of several prominent local politicians. Mir is currently an e-commerce manager at Walmart, where he has worked for 30 years. Mir, thank you for joining.
Hey, how are you doing? Actually, I'm a asset protection coach for Walmart now, so that bio is a couple of years old, but yeah. No, I've been with Walmart for about 30 years now and love the eastern shore. Luke, congratulations on joining the Waukesha County Democratic Central Committee. Great, great to see you on there. So, yeah, looking forward to tonight and seeing what you all got for me.
All right. Well, to start off, if somebody never knew who Mir Boda is, how would you describe yourself?
Well, first off, I don't take myself too seriously. That's number one. And, but as a human being, you know, I'm proud to be an American, proud to be from Maryland, and proud to and proud to live in the city of Salisbury. And my wife and I, we chose to live in Salisbury. We chose the neighborhood that we live in to live here. So, we made, we consciously made those choices to live here and to be a part of this community. And that's something that drives me to be engaged civically. And I'm proud, proud to be a part of the Salisbury City Council and the city of Salisbury in a time of growth and growing economy. People moving into our city and wanting to be a part of our city. Proud to be a part of our city at this moment.
On the topic of your tenure on the City Council, what policies are you most proud of enacting during your time on the council?
Yeah, there's a couple of things. When I first got on the council, one of the things that we struggled with in our, and this is like a process thing, was in our budget, was the ability to be able, when you're talking about different fees or ordinances or anything that's like, like when you go to pay the water bill or when you need to rent a facility at one of the parks, the fees. Finding what these fees were difficult. And then if one of them was being raised in the budget, it was tough to find it. So, one of the things I suggested was to create a document that centralized all of these. And so, that was very important because now that suggestion back then is now turned into a document that every ordinance is on there and we adopt it as a part of the budget process. It has its own ordinance. And so, that's been critical to help create better transparency. And it makes it easier for staff. If somebody calls one of the departments looking for something, there's a list of it. And then, of course, on the other end of that, the one recently that we passed, the Heroes Home Project, that just is something that I think looked at attacking all the needs that we have in housing, whether it's what's coming online soon, the Ann Street Village shelters for the homeless, you know, to affordable housing, to, you know, market rate housing and people either renting or buying homes. Trying to fill that need of all those mixtures of needs. I think this legislation doesn't do it instantly. This is stuff that takes time, but we laid the groundwork to create the environment to address these housing needs over the next five to seven years.
Yeah, building on the housing crisis that we're in the mix of, how can you and the city government address the issue and bring more housing to our area?
Well, I think Heroes Home started that process. This is a national issue. This isn't just here. And there are some things that still need to be fixed that in the past helped helped start, caused a problem in Salisbury. You know, about 20-some years ago, when the Salisbury University went from Salisbury State College to Salisbury University, you know, quickly the enrollment in Salisbury University was increasing. And there just wasn't enough available student housing. And it was also at a time that the Camden neighborhood was in transition. You had people that had lived there for many years and were either retiring, moving away, or, you know, when people passed away and the homes went to the children, they already had lives of their own. So, a lot of these properties started to turn into rentals. And being close to the college, it became prime college student rental properties. And so, they, a lot of debate of people who lived in those neighborhoods, they ended up creating a 402 law where the city government essentially restricted the, who could live in a property by their relation. And this caused a lot of problems. This also because of this, this, it started that housing, the shortage of housing supply in our city and made the problem even worse, which in those situations where you have a shortage, the price is going to go up. And we've never, you know, the growth of the university, we never really fully recovered from that. And so, I think one of the things we have to look at is repealing that law and focusing it more on something I've been advocate for for many years and turning it more into by fire code. How many people can safely live in this property with parking, ingress, egress? All of that, you know, where you would certify each property. And instead of doing it by relationship, I think that was a bit too discriminatory. And it was ultimately to keep certain people out of a neighborhood. That's why the law was made. So, I think that's one thing we could do over the next year or two to help, to help with that. But again, it's creating that environment for growth where we can build, you know, what we need to build to accommodate the people that want to live here. We know people want to live here. And we know that as soon as homes go on the market for sale, they sell. As soon as apartments become available for rent, they get rented. So, it's allowing that environment for, you know, and which we've been working on and have done with Heroes Home is to allow for the growth of our residential stock in the city.
And how can you and the council, what is your plan to address homelessness in the city?
Well, I mean, we've been one of the leaders in the country on addressing homelessness. Where with our Housing Community Development Department, when we restructured that department, we have people who are dedicated to helping the homeless in our city. And that is helping them, you know, some of it is shelter, which is why we are doing the Ann Street Village. But if they don't have that shelter, it doesn't give them that center, that place to call home. Everything else falls apart. They're less likely to go to the doctor. They're less likely to find a job because they don't have a residence. So, we're able to, and we've been helping them with many people finding homes, many people finding apartments, but also with those that have the need for, whether they're disabled veterans or other people with other mental health issues and those with addiction issues, is helping them navigate to those resources they need to help with those problems that are ultimately what caused them to be homeless. So, it's kind of like a two-prong, a three-prong approach because you also want to help them get employment. Or if they can't work, find the resources they need for the benefits that they're due, whether it's veteran benefits, whether it's social security benefits, you know, all the other things that are available to them as resources. We've been, we've been working on helping those people get those.
Well, tell us what's topics a little bit. Do you plan on seeking reelection this year? And if so, what are some of your top priorities?
Well, I've already filed for reelection. So, I'm already seeking my third term on the City Council. And so, again, it's part of the process is seeing through the things that we started. That to me is critical, especially with the Heroes Home Project and our other homeless initiatives for those that are homeless. And trying to find ways to create more affordable housing within the city. I think that's critical because if we increase the housing stock in the city, that's going to help as far as bringing down some of the costs of living, especially the costs of rent. But we also need to have those affordable housing solutions in there. And again, but doing it right. You know, you don't want to take all the affordable housing and put it in one neighborhood. That's not right. There needs to be rental complexes that have that mix, where it's not all one or the other. It needs to be a mix. The other thing is helping those people who want to own their own home and bringing together those programs and connecting people to those programs, such as Salisbury Neighborhood Housing, Habitat for Humanity. Those organizations are just excellent at helping people become homeowners. And it's not just about, hey, here you go, you're a homeowner. There's things that they have to do to learn about budgeting and about, you know, prioritizing their money, learning to save. And being able to own a home helps them build wealth, which is critical and helping to help people move into the middle class. That's, those are some of the things that I want to focus on. The other thing is, you know, expanding our mobile crisis with our police department, ensuring that that program, you know, it's off to a great start. But quickly, I can see that that program's going to need to expand and be as successful, I believe it will be as successful as our SWIFT program, which is another program we created with the fire department to help reduce the number of 911 calls by the people who are always calling. And then again, helping these people find the resources they need so they don't have to constantly call 911. And I think that's critical in ensuring that these programs keep going. So, it's my thing is, in the last election, it was keep Salisbury moving forward. My vision is not the same. The idea is to keep our city moving forward. And those are the key, key things that I see I want to focus on over the next four years.
Crystal Tumor wanted to know, when does the shelter on Ann Street Villas open?
There, it's looking either March or April. We, the biggest setback we had was for the electricity for the whole community. There was a certain, I mean, I'm not an electrician, but I know it was, you know, basically when the power comes in, it's basically a distributor or an inverter that distributes the power over all the homes. So, we, at the time, there were none available. And it's taken us about six months to be able to either get it made or locate one. And I mean, we were working with Dome River Power, who could not locate them anywhere nationwide. So, but it looks like we've got it and got it figured out. And it should be opening within the next month and a half.
In the 2022 election, you ran as Libertarian. Why did you decide to run for Waukesha County Executive as a third party? And do you feel that it had a role in getting Giordano elected?
Um, well, first, I don't, I don't think, I didn't get enough votes to cause a difference in that election. But by the time that I decided to run, as, and at the time I was a registered Libertarian, I was hopeful and more supportive of John Posoda, sorry about that, who was the Atkin County Executive. But I grew concerned because when I went to the form they had last May, none of the candidates in the form, I didn't feel were talking about some of the key issues that we're facing, that our county's facing right now. And I grew concerned that I didn't see enough of a vision from any of the candidates for the future of our county, which, so then I decided to run as a third party. In, which I was pretty sure just by aging the temperature in the county, John was not going to win the Republican primary. I think in our current environment, John was a bit too pragmatic, which is unfortunate for him and for us. So, I grew concerned and felt that at least to, if I couldn't win, to at least raise some of the issues that we're facing. And a couple of the things that I, housing was one concern. The other big thing that's a, really, it's a national issue and not, and something that's not talked about is our fire EMS service, especially with volunteers. And all of the fire companies out of county, other than the city of Salisbury, are all volunteer, with the exception of their EMS service. And so, there is a, you have fewer people who are becoming volunteer firefighters. And the people that are, are getting older. And, you know, studies show that it's physically demanding work to be a firefighter. And as people get older, they simply can't do a lot of the jobs on the fire trucks. And so, that's a concern because you're really having many of these volunteer fire companies, sometimes when they're paused, they're scratching. They're not, they're not responding. They don't have enough people at the firehouse to answer a call. And it's, for a lot of the people who do serve, it's, you know, there's very few of them. So, they're the ones that are doing all the work and they don't get paid. And so, that's tough in this environment where, you know, the amount of time somebody spends to be a volunteer firefighter, they could be working a part-time job, make ends meet. And so, there's something that countywide, we've got to, we've got to make some decisions on how we're going to provide service to our county. Now, the EMS service is another issue because they're, the, our EMTs and our paramedics, they're hired by each of the fire departments. And many of the people, once they get their certification, get some experience, they take jobs in Ocean City, in Anarongo County, where they get paid more, they get benefits. My proposal was that our EMS service, our EMTs and our paramedics be county employees, that the county run the program, using the various fire stations as the base of operations, which is where they work out of. But that we can be competitive as far as pay and benefits and provide better service and attract more EMTs and paramedics. Because the ones that are working, you know, these men and women will work a shift, which is usually a 24, 48-hour shift at one department, go work the next one at another one, and they rarely get days off. And our fire departments are competing against each other. So, I think we just need to combine the program. And I think that nobody was acknowledging that that was an issue until I brought it up in the election. So, now there's talk about it. Now, there looks like they want to do something about it and they recognize it's an issue. But the whole fire service thing, it's a national crisis. And so, a lot of people are facing the same issues that we are.
And what prompted you to change parties and seek our own? The endorsement of the LSBC after running for the county executive?
So, you know, this for me has been a progression over the past few years of where my values align. And especially when it comes to specific issues, you know, such as environmental resiliency in our infrastructure, climate change, you know, women's rights, you know, there's a whole host of issues that some I've shifted on. And some have been, since I've been on the City Council, my opinion on some things has changed. And that's sometimes when you're looking from the outside in, you know, and once you get there and you see the issues that you have, your perspective on how to deal with those issues changes. And so, I certainly, you know, was, when I was a Republican, was a never Trumper from day one. And then even after my one or two guys, I couldn't support the Republican nominee. And I was already not happy there as a Republican. And then when I ran for the Republican Central Committee, I ran for one reason. That was to spite Bob Colver. So, and somehow I won and I'd lasted two years on there, but I knew that I could not continue to support Donald Trump as president or as thing. So, because, and then it just seemed that that party just shifted around the cult and personality. And I'm not the type of person to involve myself in cults. And so, I kind of temporarily went back to the Libertarian Party as a placeholder for me. And even then, the Libertarian Party, watching some of the actions of that party, I could clearly see that, you know, that it did not reflect my values. And so, when I look at where to be effective, effective and relevant, and where my values align, and it's more in line with the Democratic Party and the Lower Shore Progressive Caucus, especially on some of the key issues that I believe in. And so, that's kind of like my progression and migration to the Democratic Party. And proud to be a Democrat now. And, you know, most of my friends are Democrats. And most of the people that I engage with as far as the issues that I'm passionate about are Democrat. And I kept seeing that more and more, my values, my perspective was more in line with people who are Democrats than Republicans or Libertarian.
All right, there's a video that we'd like to play and see your opinion on it.
You saw that for a few years. I think one year when Matt Holloway was president, he met with Rick Pollitt almost every week. And they worked on a lot of issues together and accomplished a lot of things. And I think there was a time there where things were working. But I think there were some other council members who complained about, oh, a Republican meeting with a Democrat. Well, the people elected them to serve, regardless of political party. And I think that's what they were doing. And I think that was a good thing and it's very healthy when leaders do that.
I believe that's still your stance right now.
Yeah, you know, and still regardless of who's elected, when you're elected, once you take whatever chair you're sitting in, for many of the issues, it's got to be, what's the best thing to do? What's the right thing to do? And if you, you know, in that situation, I was referring to Rick Pollitt, who was a county executive, and Matt Holloway was the county council president at the time, different political parties. And, but they would meet regularly to talk about agenda, to talk about issues, about where they could work together. And I think regardless of your political party, your approach as an elected official has to be, where can we work together? There's always going to be issues that people are going to disagree on. That's natural. But the people who accomplish the most are always looking for ways to work with other people on addressing those issues and especially issues that are important.
And there's also another video played.
We are sounding the alarms as loud as we possibly can so that there is no mistake that this man can go nowhere near the governor's mansion.
Louis, along with two Democratic state delegates, called Cox's anti-abortion stance so extreme, it's disqualifying. And then unveiled a Cox quote to prove it. Unearthed, the Dems say, from a candidate questionnaire Cox filled out during a failed 2016 congressional bid.
He wanted to make it crystal clear that even when abortion is a medically necessary procedure with life or death consequences, he would sentence a woman or a girl to death.
The Cox Q and A, still living online on a voting guide geared toward conservative Christians that's part of the American Family Association, which is anti-LGBTQ and is a Southern Poverty Law Center designated hate group.
Intends to punish those that he disagrees with by taking away basic rights.
On that video, how do you feel about county executive Giordano trying to appoint Dan Cox as special counsel?
Well, I mean, first off, Cox had no qualification for the position that she was appointing him to. He's an attorney, yes. He was a delegate, yes. But he has no local or municipal government experience in those issues. So, that's a concern when you're, when you're trying to appoint someone to a position that, you know, has no experience in that. That's just not, you know, first of all, despite all the other stuff that Dan Cox is, I am not a Dan Cox fan. And I, it, you know, I say it saddened me, but it didn't surprise me that he was nominated as the Republican nominee for governor for the Republican Party. That was just, like I said, I'm not a Dan Cox fan. And I don't see the necessity of him being in that role in Waukesha County. There's no, there's no, there's no need for it.
Alicia would like to know if there'll be restrooms available at the Villas or the Ann Street for the homeless?
I believe that there are restrooms available. I'd have to look at the designs again, but I know that everything was going to be available that they would need for personal needs.
Okay. Swishing gears a little, how can the county council attract more good-paying jobs that pay a livable wage to our region?
Talking about the county council or the city council?
The city council.
Oh, the city council. So, I mean, again, it's, you know, our goal is to create the environment, to create the environment for growth. And so, that's where, you know, working with, you know, or sweat, Salisbury-Waukesha Economic Development Committee, Tri-County Council of the Lower Eastern Shore. It's important that, you know, we work with them on ways to attract good-paying jobs. And if that's, you know, you know, looking at our industrial park where some of those jobs come in, but also trying to find ways to attract tech jobs. And with us upgrading some of our fiber optics in the area, I think that can also attract some of those types of jobs. So, there's different things that we can do. But I think it's mostly for us, it's creating the environment that's welcoming to those types of businesses.
Lisa also said that she's trying to start a shelter in Salisbury. She's learned that one of the biggest things right now is mental health, which is causing people to be homeless and unstable. She wants to know how could she get some help on putting, not putting a band-aid on the issue, but to help the homeless people, whether it be a cell tour, cell tour or a mental health clinic. She doesn't know, she doesn't want to send them off, but she'd rather help them herself. With that being said, where would she start off the process of starting a shelter?
Well, I would say, you know, first off, work with, working with shelters that are already here. So, partnering with So partnering with the Christian Shelter, partnering with our network network of churches that offer shelters throughout the wintertime. Because if you're working with them, these are the people that have been doing it. And, you know, they they understand a lot of the the things you should do and shouldn't do when you're trying to start something like that. But the other the other piece is partnering with the the Health Department, partnering with Halo, which is organization that that works with homeless in our area, and partnering with the city's homelessness advisor. Because they they've got a lot of their resources that someone who wants to start a shelter needs to needs to tap into. And they're they're going to be able to help you with say, hey, if you've got someone that's got this, you call this person. You've got someone that's this, you call this group. This number in in your phone, if you've got somebody that struggles with addiction or mental health. So so there's those people are the ones that you want to initially partner with when starting out, because it's going to save a lot of legwork and a lot of frustration on your part with starting a shelter if you already have those connections. That the partnership on any of that is the critical piece to it.
How is the city of Salisbury protecting our environment and fighting climate scenes? And do you believe the city can do more?
Well, I I think the, one of the things that we focused on and since I've been on council is when whenever we're building infrastructure is is understanding that we're not building it for today or tomorrow or next year, we're building it for thirty, forty, fifty years down the road. And we have to, we have to understand the resiliency that's needed in there in our in the way that we design and construct our infrastructure. And what we did with our downtown master plan where we went through and redeveloped our main street, you know, it solved ninety, ninety-five percent of the flooding issues in our downtown just by upgrading our our infrastructure. That's that's critical wherever we, whether it's Fitzwater Street, whether it's other areas of our city that that we, what we planned to do on Eastern Shore Drive, that's going to help in that area with some flooding issues that that happens occasionally. So it's it's understanding that our infrastructure, it's it's critical that we we think, we don't think in terms of years, we think in terms of decades when we're building something because fifty to sixty years is about the lifespan of when you when you put in, when you put in something. So, you know, even if you look at, you know, on Waverly Drive about ten years ago, ten, fifteen years ago, they had a lot of issues with flooding in the neighborhoods behind it. But once we went in and and replaced the stormwater system, that alleviated the the flooding issues which create health issues in homes for mold and all that stuff. But it's important that we that that we design everything to withstand the the stronger and bigger storms that are coming every year. We see record storms. The the other thing that we've that we've done and we continue to focus on one of our number one, one of our number one focuses is a wastewater treatment plant. We struggled with years of 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 issues of it not not getting rid of the nitrates that it was supposed to. And so now we're we are at a point that we're no longer under consent from the state of Maryland. And and we now far exceed the requirements of the MDE, which are some of the strictest in the country. But it's important that we that that we maintain our focus on that because it's it's was one of the major contributors to pollution in the Waukesha River. It's a different world now. And it's so much cleaner and it's the river is going to going to benefit from it so much better over the coming decades. Where the goal was, I don't know if it's going to be swimable, but at least fishable in that area of Waukesha River. But that's kind of like, you know, focusing on the those are are critical pieces of infrastructure that that affect the environment. And so it's important that we, when we're implementing that stuff, that 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 it's done right and and in a positive way for the environment.
And how is the city of Salisbury balancing, reducing and preventing crime and police accountability?
So even before the the most recent Police Accountability Board, Salisbury had already put one into place. And Mayor Day did that about two years before it came out. So one of the things when we first got on the council that what we saw was there there were a lot of lawsuits lingering with the city when we first got on. And one of the first things we did was implement body cams for all police officers, ensuring that there were cameras in all police cars. And and it was connected to a system that was always recording. And then as soon as it hit any wifi in the downtown area or when it pulled into the police parking lot, the video would start to upload. So so we always had have this all this video from all these interactions. And what we noticed is, once we fully implemented the body cameras for all of our police officers, we've had zero lawsuits since we've had that in there. Mainly because the officers know that now they're always on camera. And it curbs some of that potentially potential bad behavior. But also, we we recognize that when 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 people know that they're on camera, their behavior kind of lessens too. So the the term that it takes to the tango, you know, in an argument, you know, a lot of times there's give and take. And but I but I think, you know, even the times where our officers were have been accused over the past few years, and then they always pull people in to look at the video. A lot of times they see themselves on video and they don't want to, they're like, ah, okay, all right. You know, maybe maybe I was wrong. Maybe maybe I took what the officer said wrong. You know, it it could have been, you know, I I don't have access to all the issues, but that's what I'm hearing coming back to me when they have those issues. But with with the with that has been, we've seen a just total reduction in complaints on our officers. Which then, when there are complaints, and I know and I know I know of some situations where officers were were disciplined or terminated based on their behaviors. So I I think it goes in with the the accountability piece is is there an accountability within our own department when when issues happen? Because a lot of people don't realize that the Department of Salisbury Police Department is one is one of the few accredited agencies throughout the country. And in that is an independent group comes in and they review everything. They go through, they review reports, they review. And so officers, I mean, they're very strict on even how they write a report. Like they get they get written up if they wrote the report wrong or didn't include something. Or it went and they they went to go verify and and what was on the video wasn't included in the report. They're internally going to get in trouble. So they have to show that there's been some disciplinary action if there's an issue with something. So the the department itself is very strict in in the way that they run the department. Unlike some other departments in in our in our region where there have been issues. And so if you get to the point where there's serious complaints, there's probably been issues that haven't been taken. So I just know just from experience and working with the department over the years in in my day job, how strict that they are because some of the officers that I was friends with would always come into my office and complain about getting written up. You know, and I'm like, well, you got to do the paperwork, right? You know, you can't leave something out if they know that there is something. So, you know, I I know firsthand that they're very strict and they're and they're held to very high standards, which is important because if they if there's a high standard and there's no room for for nonsense and and not treating people right and violating people's rights. So 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 I know that there's already a high standard there. I I do think the Police Accountability Boards that they implemented, I think that they're a good thing. How the state implemented it was not. Because it was it was rammed through and then it was shoved down to everybody and saying, hey, you got to implement this right now. And as we were trying to implement it, the state's Attorney General's Office kept sending down more opinions days before we're trying to implement something. And so then we have to stop what we're doing, read what they're saying, then try to go back to see. It was it was a mess. The the other piece of it, and this is something that the Maryland Municipal League is is advocating for in Annapolis this year, is some amendments to that legislation to allow municipalities such as Salisbury to either have their own accountability board and charging committee or have designated seats on the existing ones in the county. So the legal issue that we have, the county government is is not a is not is not a government that is over the municipalities and can tell them what to do. We're 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 equal, we're separate and equal forms of government. And so the municipalities that have police departments, Fruitland, Salisbury, Delmar, which now Delmar is a town whose police department operates under two councils, two mayors in two states. So so they have to adhere to laws and regulations in two states. And then you have Pittsville, who has one officer. So those those towns should have seats on on the accountability board, and they don't. So I I think it's important that we that we have a voice in what's there or be allowed to set up our own to do. So that's so that's kind of like what we're what we're wanting to see in in the amendments that are hopefully going to come out of Annapolis this session.
John asked, said we had, we hired twenty-four officers in the last four years, twenty-three of them left for other agencies. How and when are we going to give them the money to keep them?
Well, again, we are in competition with the Maryland State Police who keep raising their raising their pay. And every year that I've been on the city council, we have we have raised the pay rates for our police officers. We've also, we've also on several different occasions given increases mid-year for for scale adjustments for our officers. It's it's a competitive market for police officers. And the one things that that we find here is our police department runs between fifty and sixty thousand calls for service a year. We are by far the busiest law enforcement agency on the Delmar Peninsula. And so there is a high volume of calls and and a lot of it's it's not something where a police officer is going to go and sit in a vehicle, you know, for a couple of hours and not have any calls. If you're going to work in the Salisbury Police Department, you're going to work. And so a lot of times, these these officers will come in if they are on in any sort of program, a grant program, or we put them to the academy. If they leave before their contract's up, they have to pay us back. Because it's not right for the citizen of Salisbury to pay for somebody to get certified and then go somewhere else. But when they're going to these other agencies, their workload is going to be probably half, if not, if not more than half, lower than what they would work here. So we know it's a very busy agency. But we're also we're also limited on funds. We don't we don't have unlimited resources to to pay fair wages, not just to our police officers, our firefighters, our our wastewater treatment plant operators. That's another very competitive market. And and even people who operate our water treatment plant. You know, those are specialized issues and and we get, they 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 try to recruit our people all the time. And not just the police department. So it's it's a very competitive market. And, you know, it's we we don't, we don't have unlimited resources. Now, one of the things we are doing is we are currently in negotiations with our collective bargaining for our officers. So we we will, we're we're allowing them to become unionized along with our firefighters and and city employees. So and and so then they'll go through a negotiation process on on raises, on on all of that stuff in in the in this in this agreement.
Now that you're recognized as an elected progressive, what does what does being a progressive mean to you? And under your leadership as the council president, how will you advance progressive reform and policies throughout the city?
Well, for me, you know, I I think it's being progressive, I I think it comes with looking to the future, looking forward and moving our city forward and and in in addressing the issues that get us there. It's it's critical to partner with people and to partner with members of the council on issues that that they see with the administration. So, you know, it's for me, it's it's moving the city forward. And and that is through progress. And so when you support resiliency, when you support, you know, making sure that that we you know, address the homeless issues head on, doing things that other cities aren't doing, trying things out, trying new things. To some, that's, you know, ah, it's bad because it's that word progressive. But when you're trying new things to see if they work and you're trying it for the betterment of the people of your community, from the least of these to the people who have the most, you know, you you're you're doing it to better everybody. And and I think that sometimes they think the issues are controversial, but to me, it's about people. It's about creating an environment that everybody's welcome and they feel welcome and they proud to call your city home. And I I, you know, if that's if that's too much for some people, I I don't know, but I I I believe in people and I believe creating that environment of kindness, of love, and and just having a better a better city for everybody to live in. That's that's what I view as a progressive. And using my platform as as a council president to ensure that that we we put forth policies and programs and priorities in our budget to reflect that.
All right. And this is the last question. What do you want your legacy to be?
You know, I don't always think about, you know, legacy, but, you know, I I I at least want to be reminded for someone who who worked with a lot of people from a lot of different viewpoints and 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 found a way to to work together with everybody. I I, you know, that partnership is is a is a big thing that I believe in. And giving people the platform to be successful in our community and not being a robot. I I think that's kind of the the key for me is is to ensure that that we have an environment that's inclusive, that that believes in kindness and and that we continue this this forward progress of our city to the next level. And and the goal for me has always been to leave this city that's been entrusted in 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 my hands along with the the council members and the mayor, to to leave it better for the next generation than we received it. And and I hope that at at the end of of my tenure, however long that is, that we've done that.
All right. Is there anything you'd like to say in closing?
No, I I, you know, I'm I'm appreciative to all my friends in the Democratic Party who welcomed me, welcomed me in with open arms. I, you know, I feel much more at home here. And I don't, when I hear people talk in meetings and stuff that are Democrats, I don't I don't cringe as much as I used to. So, but now I don't cringe at all. And but I appreciate everybody. I appreciate the love and the kindness that everybody's shown me and I look forward to to working with everybody over the coming years.
All right. Well, thank you for joining us. I'd like to say that Waukesha Democratic Central Committee is proud to announce that planning for the unity dinner is moving forward and save the dates will be coming out soon. And I will pass it over to the Chair of the LSBC.
Hey, everyone. For those of you who don't join, who don't know who I am or are joining us for the first time, my name is Jared Shablon. I am the Chair of the Lower Shore Progressive Caucus. I want to start by thanking Mio Boda, Councilmember Mio Boda, for joining us this evening, sharing his viewpoints, and most of all, being willing to come work with the Lower Shore Progressive Caucus. The progressive movement is proud to welcome you in for open arms. He's been a champion of working people, a champion of protecting our environment, and really has helped Mayor Day, Councilwoman Gregory, and the other members of the Salisbury City Council in moving forward a progressive agenda. With that, in terms of building the progressive movement and electing good folks like Mio Boda, there's a couple of events that are coming up that we definitely love to see you at. Our first one is next Thursday. We will be having a monthly meeting on Zoom. We're going to go ahead and put the link in the comments. Uh, um, and then also the link that you just saw, the Google form is if you want interested in volunteering, joining a committee, hosting an event, attending an event, uh, you can go ahead and click that link there, uh, and sign up. Uh, finally, if you're interested in donating, um, to the LSBC and our work, you can do so at the ActBlue link. Look, I understand, uh, being asked for money is annoying. A lot of people ask for money. Uh, we are a nonpartisan local organization. We do not have special interests. We do not accept big donations from, uh, corporate entities. Uh, we are solely reliant on people from the eastern shore who want to make a better eastern shore. Uh, so consider making a donation. And then finally, you can check us out on our website. Um, if you are new and joining us for the first time, if you're watching on YouTube, make sure you subscribe. If you're on Facebook, make sure to give us a like on our page. And of course, if you're on Twitter, give us a follow and maybe give us a retweet. Uh, thank you all so much for coming. Uh, we look forward to doing these town halls again in the future. Hopefully about, hopefully going to do about one a month. Uh, but, uh, yeah, thank you all so much for, for coming and, uh, y'all enjoy your weekend.